Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to you as well, Ms. Engle.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Mr. Livingston. How are you this evening?
All right, thank you. Let me call the Richland Council meeting. Vice Secretary, order. Mrs. Black. Can you call the roll for attendance, please?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Here.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Present.
Livingston.
Present.
Horatio.
Here.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Here.
Overture Walker. Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton. We have a quorum.
Thanks very much. Next on our agenda is invocation, and that's going to be by the Honorable Derek Pugh, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can I ask everyone to bow our heads? God, we like to thank you for this opportunity for us to assemble together as a body. We ask you for strength, clarity, and wisdom as we do the work of the people for Richland County. We like to ask all these things to your son Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Could y'all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That brings us to approval of the minutes. First is our minutes for, this is 4A, regular session minutes for February 16th, adjourned to motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion for approval is a second.
Second.
Moving properly, second. Any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, Mrs. Black, can you call the roll for the approval of minutes for February 16th?
Malinowski.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was having audio problems before and could not hear or speak, so I don't know if someone noted that I was here for the roll call or not, but I am present.
Okay, and Ms. Black, did you get that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Joe Walker, same issue with me. I am here.
Walker. Ms. Black, get Ms. Walker.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings to item four, the on your agenda, that is approval of minutes for the zoning public hearing on February 23rd, adjourned to motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a second.
Second.
It's moved improperly, second.
Chair.
Any change, deletions, corrections?
Mr. Chair, am I recognized?
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you. On the zoning minutes on item three and four, I am marked as present and not voting. As I communicated with you, I had a conflict where I had to briefly leave the meeting, and so I would like to be noted as not present for those two votes, sir.
Okay. Any other change, corrections to the minutes? If not, if moving properly, second, I'll ask Ms. Black to call the roll.
Malinowski.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
And Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings to item five, the adoption of the agenda. Adjourned to motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
It's a move. Second.
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 Moving properly, second. Mr. Brown, there are things, changes to the agenda from staff.
No, sir, Mr. Chair. Staff has no request for amendments to the agenda.
Thank you. It's moved properly, second for adoption of the agenda. Mrs. Black, can you call the roll?
Malinowski.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings to item six on our agenda, reported the acting county attorney, Mr. Clinton.
Make sure.
Executive session items. Miss Newton, you recognize?
Thank you. We have one item for executive session this evening, item 6A, Coggins versus Richland County and Seals. That is also Gerald Seals' settlement issue. There will be discussion of attorney-client privilege matter, issued legal advice, and potential settlement of claims. Those will be pursuant to section 30 dash 4 dash 70 A2 of the Freedom of Information Act. And those will involve outside counsel, and that concludes my report.
You said that that doesn't involve outside counsel, correct?
Yes, sir.
You know, per counsel rules, we'll take up this matter at this point. And before I enter into motion going into the session, that motion will be with Coggins versus Richland County and Seals regarding Gerald Seals' settlement, discussion of attorney-client privilege matters, receipt of legal advice, settlement of claims, all pursuant to section 30 dash 4 dash 70 A2. And after the council turns to a process, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section listed on an executive session agenda for discussion in the executive session during the proper notice. The chair would adjourn to motion for executive session for this.
I'm moved to go into executive session.
Second.
It's moved improperly, second. Mrs. Black, can you call the roll for motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
No.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
No.
Joe Walker.
There.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now going to executive session for the matters as discussed. Or stated.
Chair and ten motion to my table session.
Hello.
So moved. Yes, sorry. So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's removed. It's a second.
Second.
Moving proper sector of the session. Ms. Black, can you cover open motion command segment of session?
Yes, sir. Malinowski. Hugh.
Yes.
Bride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Chair and ten motion. Definitely think of session.
Mr. Chair.
Ben, you recognize.
I move that we approve legal to move forward as requested in executive session and bring back the necessary information to us at our next council meeting.
You heard the motions are second.
Second.
It's a move and properly second. Miss.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mr. Walker. Is that you? Mr. Walker, you recognize.
Joe Walker.
You recognize.
Make a substitute motion. Make a substitute motion that we acknowledge the motion made in November pertaining to this issue. That we extend an invitation to Mr. Seals for a public hearing that would provide him an unfettered opportunity to speak his mind, tell us the reasons for which he believes he was fired. Tell us the various actions that he saw that he thinks the public needs to see so that our taxpayers can see why almost a million dollars of their money was paid out as a settlement.
Very good. It's a moving proper second. Mrs. Black, can you carve it open motion?
Yes, sir. Malinowski. Hugh.
Yes.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tratio.
Oh, yes.
Jay Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Hmm. Yes.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton. Yes. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Joe Walker, you recognize.
I move to reconsider a previous motion.
Very good. Moving proper circle reconsideration. Mrs. Black, can you carve it off of what's the reconsideration?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Oh.
Hugh.
No.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
No.
Joe Walker.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. No. Motion fails.
Motion for reconsideration fails. That moves on to the next item on our agenda. Which is item seven. This is input. This. This Mike, do we have any one persistent input?
No, sir. Not for this item.
Mrs. Just for clarification, Mrs. Black, let me go back to the previous motion. Can you tell me what was the number of those and number of folks voted against the motion and how many voted for the actual motion? How many voted? Most to reconsider, how many folks voted yes for reconsideration?
Six.
And no for reconsideration.
Five.
Five. So that meant that motion was reconsidered and it's back on the table. So it's not appropriate for me to move forward because now that motion was reconsidered. So now it's back before us.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If the motion is back before us, I would move to consider Ms. Gretchen's first motion. Second.
And that and that motion by Ms. Gretchen.
Was to have staff proceed as addressed in executive session.
The motion is that motion is back before us then is a second.
Thank you.
That was moving proper second. Mrs. Black, can you carve it off of that motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mr. Walker, you recognize.
Point of order. Is there open for discussion?
Go ahead.
I want to go on the rec. I want to go on the record and clearly articulate. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I want to go on the record and clearly articulate that in November, the then council put forward a path that was voted on, approved, and clinched by the then council. This directive flies in the face of that action. I will personally look into the legality of the actions of this evening as opposed to what's already been passed and clinched in November. Thank you.
Let me just follow back a lead, ask a legal question. But this motion, this motion then brought a previous council's motion, that, that particular motion, that, that motion was made is still, was still available. To Mr. Seals, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, what do we, what do we, what do we avoid or taken away?
My understanding would be nothing at this point. I think that Mr. Seals's response, as discussed, was, was his response to that motion.
Right, he was not denied that motion, correct?
Not in my opinion, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Malinowski, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want clarification on this motion. It seemed to me that when the initial motion was made, the word. It may have been as directed in executive session. We cannot be direct. Something in executive session, and that's where the initial problem came about. So I'd like to hear exactly what the language of the motion was, or have the language redone so that there is not a.
Could we have, could we make sure, and leave, help us make sure the language is, 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 is proper as, as way to the motion, so we won't have to use the word direct?
Might I suggest that you use the word discussed, as that was what was discussed in executive session?
Correct.
Okay. Mrs. Just for the record. Ms. Baron, can you restate the motion? For the record, to use discuss.
Sure. It is to, I move to approve legal as discussed in executive session to bring back the necessary information by the next council meeting. Maybe a little bit different that time, this go around. But.
Okay, and that was proper second. The second still holds?
Well, that was my motion following what Ms. Gretchen said, yes.
Okay, thank you. That is the motion and new motion and second, then. I'll be in further discussion. If not, Ms. Black, can you cover open motion?
Alanowski.
No.
Hugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
No.
Joe Walker.
No.
Aaron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Sorry, no.
I have six yeses, the motion passed.
Thank you. That brings us to. Since then, quick items seven, Mrs. Black, do we have anyone who sign up for system input?
No, sir.
Ms. Black, do we have anyone?
No, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I did. That public here is open and not closed. Items of eight, since the input pertained to a rich account of matter not on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Black, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, sir, I have one comment.
You can share that with us for two minutes.
Yes, sir. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, can and will Richland County Council pause the countywide rezoning process until public hearings, face-to-face discussions, and meetings can take place? Or does council recommend a judicial solution to decide if public hearing should take place? Why pause the process? A, things will be going back to normal soon. B, last weekend, overwhelming results support the pause. In an ad hoc vote on a lower Richland County Facebook group, the knows clearly have no knowledge and would like public hearings about the countywide rezoning process. No one was positive about this issue. Another ad hoc vote with a different Richland County Facebook group rendered the same results. Background on the need for the county government to pause the process in order to effectively communicate with the citizens. When I called the main number for Richland County Office, I was unable to speak with anyone in the building or who works for the county. B, because one gets a voicemail when one calls. C, because we cannot attend council meetings. D, because we cannot attend zoning meetings. E, because we cannot see sa, zoning staff. F, because countywide rezoning process continues without a face-to-face public hearing. G, because of lack of trust within constituent base regarding county council members' actions of past and recent corruption issues. H, there appears to not be enough accountability within the government. I, because in previous county zoning meetings, emails from constituents were modified and some ignored by staff. In additions, letters were ignored and not read. J, because we were informed that there was sufficient citizen input by way of a consulting firm that no one in Richland County knows about. Can our Richland County Council pause the countywide rezoning process? Or does it require judicial intervention in the form of an injunction? Thank you, Mr. Whitler Slagoff.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And now that public here is closed, that brings the item nine on our agenda, reported account administrator, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of council, in your agenda packet, beginning on pages twenty-eight through forty-five, you will find my administrator's report. I will not talk about each item in there, but I will cover briefly what that information entails. Beginning on that first page, you have the general information, which outlines the order which I'm going to cover. This information on tonight, starting with the statistical data specific to Richland County. So on pages twenty-nine and thirty, I believe, of your agenda packet, you will find the Richland County county, county information in nineteen on a county level basis, and this was effective as of two twenty-five. So February twenty-fifth, when we got to turn the packet in. So you will see that it's showing that Richland County's test there, that case count, hospitalizations, as well as the number of deaths, which is slightly under five hundred as of the time of this printing. Also, you will see that at the time, we were roughly about nine point eight percent in terms of percent positive. So again, that's just to give you some indication of county level data. Early on, related to COVID-19, the goal has always been hopefully five percent or lower. So you will see that based on this data, we're still slightly above that five percent ideal mark. So I wanted to share that with you, and all this information is found on DHEC's website. Additionally, if you turn to page thirty-one, I just included some myths and facts related to the COVID-19. I know that we're still trying to help people get information about COVID-19 and make sure that they are aware of what's true and what are myths. So I did include that for citizens who may review the county's packet and look at this information. Again, that information also can be found on DHEC's website. Also, in the packet, I believe on page thirty-three, you will find a frequently asked questions related to the COVID-19 vaccine. So we know certainly there are a lot of constituents that you have who have been asking you questions and who may go to different areas to try to find good information. This is our attempt to try to be a good source of information for the citizens. So this information is found on DHEC's website, but it is questions that are frequently asked about the COVID-19 vaccine. Continuing on, I did include in there a document that I'm going to spend just a few extra moments on, Mr. Chair, members of council, and that's the COVID-19 vaccine flow in South Carolina. That's on page thirty-five of your packet. If you had an opportunity to listen earlier today, Governor McMaster, along with DHEC, announced that they were moving to phase one B of the vaccine flow in South Carolina. That will impact some of the individuals who are certainly within Richland County, but certainly as the county government as well. So we have sent out an email to the county employees as a whole, but there are going to be some targeted employees that we're going to reach out to that we believe, besides the general information that's contained here, that that may apply to, such as those members of our correctional staff, such as members of the judicial staff, magistrates, those types of individuals. Maybe individuals without our register of deeds office, as well as individuals in our CASA offices who are dealing with constituents on a daily basis, face-to-face, in-person contact, individuals coming in and out of those facilities. So there may be a few others. I have had a brief conversation with our emergency management director, Mr. Berg, to kind of discuss what people that we would fall into one B versus one C. So I wanted to just spend a few moments to make sure the council was aware of the governor's action and what that means and how that will impact some of our staff. They'll be able to go out as of Monday and register for the COVID-19 vaccine if they so choose and have access, access to that vaccine based on the actions communicated by the governor's office and DHEC earlier on today. So again, that chart, flow chart is on page thirty-five. And again, I would just point out that while Richland County participates, we do not distribute vaccines, nor do we have jurisdiction over who gets a vaccine and who does not. So I wanted to share that information with the council. And also in the packet, again, a question and answer sheet about what phase am I in to help citizens and employees take a look at the information that is shared by DHEC as they try to figure out whether or not they are eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. So that takes us basically through pages forty of the agenda packet. And I'll stop there just for a brief moment, Mr. Chair, to see if there are any questions related to the COVID-19 vaccine information shared by Governor McMaster and DHEC on today.
Any, any questions?
All right, sir, hearing none. On page forty-one of your agenda packet, this is just something that we talked about during the council retreat. And there are some proposed dates that staff has put together for budget workshops. This past month of February, we spent the month meeting with departments within county government discussing the budget outlook for this year and getting their budget request. So that's coming up right around the corner. If you take a look on page forty-two, you will see some proposed workshop opportunities. We are hoping that council members will take advantage of those opportunities. That will be a time for us to just really have a good dialogue, really back and forth type of questions and answers and feedback. Very informal, but very question and answer driven, so that we can make sure that when we come to the council in our scheduled budget meetings, that we can have very productive meetings that will result in the council being able to adopt a budget on the timeline that's relevant to the council. So that information is again located on page forty-two, and those are some recommended workshops. On page forty-three, you have the recommended budget calendar that we are asking council to consider. Certainly, this is information right now, Mr. Chair and members of council. But at the appropriate time that you choose to make this action, you do have a recommended budget calendar that will give you that opportunity for us to move forward. But tonight, I want to present this to you so that we can be thinking about this in the upcoming months. Want to move on from there and just talk here briefly about another item for information so that you will be aware that this is happening. In February twenty nineteen, county council voted on its utilities, water sewer program. They approved a rate increase for the next three fiscal years. This past year, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, county council took action to basically say to those approved rates that we were going to delay inputting those rates for basically six months. So instead of being effective July first, twenty twenty, council delayed that approved rate increase into the first of the year. So now that we have a new county council, I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of the information and aware that we need to, as a staff, go ahead and, and put those rates in place. Without doing that, as we mentioned to the previous council, we will not be able to meet our bond obligations. So again, this is really information for council that I'm sharing this with you. If we want to discuss the next level rate increase that was supposed to happen in July of twenty twenty-one, we certainly can discuss that at a later date. But in terms of information, we have to approve, we have to go ahead and move forward with those increases that were scheduled for this past fiscal year, because without it, we will not be able to meet our debt obligation. So again, this is information for council, but I thought it important to share it with you so that if you got questions from the citizens, that this would not be a surprise, or this is not anything new. This is something that was already approved and scheduled, that council delayed it as a tactic to allow citizens to have some relief related to rates. But again, this is something that we must move forward with. So I'll stop there for a moment and take any questions. But I did want to bring this before the council so that you would be aware of it when, when we go ahead and move forward with this increase.
Okay, any further questions?
One.
I'm sorry, Ms. Horatio, then Ms. Newton, then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually didn't act quickly enough for Mr. Brown's first part of the update. And he mentioned, you know, that we're looking at that for five percent to kind of go back. I do have constituents that are eager to access the county, you know, in person seems to be easier. Could you give us a little bit of an update on to, I know that you've mentioned, you've kind of given us an update before, but maybe give us the new news about how county staff are ensuring that they are able to receive emails and phone calls and respond to constituents from regardless of how they're working?
Yes, ma'am. And again, the majority of actually county staff is actually physically working in county offices on days of the week. There are some that are here every day, and there are some that are working staggered schedules, simply meaning that individuals don't want to, we want to reduce the opportunity for whole offices to be necessarily be wiped out if we have any COVID-19 exposures. Because again, currently the quarantine processes, if individuals are exposed, they have to remove themselves from the premises where other individuals are for a period of, depending on whether or not they're receiving a positive or negative test result for ten to fourteen days. So we were still having offices that are staggered and their work schedules, meaning that everybody's not there at the same time. But they are there in that office throughout the physical work week. So that is happening. We have very few employees that are, where there is no one working remotely all the time. I can only think of one agency right now where the majority of their work is remote. And that is our Ums-Budsmans office, because their, their work is mainly done via email and phone call. The majority of all the other staff are physically present. With that being said, with the institution of one B vaccine phase, we believe that will allow employees now to feel more comfortable about being in the office potentially and have more of those individuals in those offices not have to maybe necessarily work those staggered schedules. And certainly after one C, we, we fully expect that that will be the case. But individual employees should be able to access emails and phone calls from their office space at this time, Councilmember Horatio.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and I am seeing good responses from the Ums-Budsmans office. And I'll connect with you offline and, and let you know my other concerns.
Understood. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Chair.
Questions, I think there were questions, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did call names of folks, you know, in order. If you don't remember the name in order, I know Ms. Newton's name is, is still raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, a few questions on sewer. First is looking at the sewer rate update that you have here. I just want you to confirm that this is separate from the rate that council approved, the rate structure that council approved for the District eleven transfer customers, is that correct? That's going to proceed as negotiated?
That is correct. That is included with the approved process. And no, no constituent within Richland County will receive more than a fifteen percent rate increase throughout the. Uh, more than a fifteen percent rate increase throughout the system, including those individuals. Uh, that you're referencing Ms. Newton, but that it does include all Richland County. Uh, constituent, no one will receive more than a fifteen percent increase. Up to the flat rate that is approved by county council.
So then you may have answered my next question, but just so that I'm clear, I want to ask again. You mentioned that the previous rate increase, I think it was scheduled for July twenty twenty, did not happen. And that that rate increase has to happen to meet our bond payment obligations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that is July of last year's rate increase. But that aside, a constituent wouldn't expect. Their rate to be increased twice during fiscal year, tw- twice during twenty twenty-one to make up for twenty twenty. Was that clear?
Yes, ma'am. I, that, that is my, that will be my request to council. I can't say that right now because technically. The vote, um, that the council took, it's, you know, different from this. But when I come back to you, uh, with the item for action, uh, my recommendation after meeting with our finance team. Will be likely to, instead of make waiting up fourteen months, that we do the scheduled. July twenty twenty-one increase in January of the following year. But then we don't wait to July of, um. Twenty twenty-two because then we're, you know, roughly, um, almost a year and a half behind when we were supposed to increase the rates, the second time.
Okay, but that's part of a specific recommendation that you'll be coming back to us with.
Correct. We're not making any assumptions and we're not doing anything right now, but what we already, uh, talked to council about. For, um, the delay. Coming forward in a separate recommendation will be asking council, how would you like to deal with? The third, uh, installment, quote unquote, if you will, of the, of the previously approved rates. And we will talk about that in detail and our recommendation likely will be do it in January and not to wait. Until July of the following year because again, we'll be almost fourteen months behind.
Okay, well, I would hope that even however that process works out, that we would have, uh, really robust. Uh, communications with our constituents, but, um, I don't know that anyone knows the answer to this question, but I'll ask anyway. Um, as far as we are aware right now, is there any opportunity for any federal dollars or COVID relief dollars? That might be able to be applied, um, to this case? And that's my last question, Mr. Chair and Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So one of the things that you heard, I'm sorry, I should not assume that. So in the previous discussion that we had about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Richland County as a utility system does qualify. And those renters that are, you know, paying, uh, rent within our system have the ability. Uh, when the time comes to qualify, uh, for that program as well. Uh, but beyond that, we have not, um, been able to get any other funding source. That we can use to pay for, uh, the, the funds that we are not receiving for our utility system.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Malanowski?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Administrator Brown, I'd like clarification, please, on. Your one response to Councilwoman Newton. She asked about rate increases, no more than one per year. And we're talking about a January increase and a July increase. Now, I don't know if her question was referring to a calendar year or a fiscal year. Cause you can certainly do one in January and another one in July, and it's one in each fiscal year. Which are you referring to, please?
Yes, sir. I'm referring to a, I'll try to simplify. If we do, well, we're going to do an increase now because we, we have to. But in terms of the next increase, sir, I would say that, uh. The, the January of next year is when we would come back to the council. And say the last time we increased rates was, you know, March, um, and we were supposed to do it in January. So we're asking now that you would do it in January.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Brown, that completes your report.
Mr. Chair, yes, sir. That's the ma- majority of my, my information. I'll just briefly point out. Uh, that we do have listed in your packet, uh, some for the citizens who are listening. Uh, some continued COVID-19 testing, uh, and mask giveaway events. Uh, those are happening in District Two. There's continue to be scheduled through April. On the second Saturday of each month in Blythewood and the last Saturday of each month in St. Uh, Andrews. So those dates are listed, uh, in our agenda packet. Uh, we did, uh, voice them on last council meeting. Those, uh, dates are still relevant. I just want to remind citizens that you do have access to that testing site as well as the one that's at. Um, the Columbia Place Mall if you need COVID-19 testing. Uh, with that, Mr. Chair, members of council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings us to the port of the, uh, clerk of council, Mrs. Black. Do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, next is item eleven, report of the chair. The chair doesn't have a report. And that brings item twelve on your agenda. That is the approval of consent items. And those items are, um, twelve A through twelve R. Chair with entertaining motion reference, you can send items.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Ms. McBride, you recognize?
I move for approval of twelve A through R.
Motion's for approval, consent out of twelve A through R is a second.
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 It's a move the proper second. Mr. Malanowski, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like for, uh, to remove for quick clarification on H, L, M, N, and O.
H, L, M, N, and O.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That said, then the motion is, is for the consent item, says of H, L, M, N, and O. Uh, this is moving properly second. Um, Ms. Black, can you call the role for the motion regarding the consent, um, items?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Teresa, you recognize?
Does the modification need to be seconded as well?
Does what?
Does the, uh, Mr. Malanowski's, uh, request to pull out certain items, does that need a second? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is, um, Black can call the role for motion for those, uh, for the, um, consent items.
Yes, sir. Malanowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to, um, consent item H, which is twelve H. Uh, solid waste, um, mission recycled events. Um, it's Malanowski.
I just want to bring it to staff's attention that, uh, I, I support this wholeheartedly. I just noticed that all the events throughout this next year are in one location. Which is not centrally located to Richland County. I would like to see additional events scheduled in other areas of, of the county also. And if it's a matter of because the county now owns Columbia Place Mall location. There is a location that the county owns over in Mr. Pugh's district over there at the old antique mall as well. So I think we need to be a little bit fair in making sure these types of events are scheduled throughout the county. That's all I want to say on that one. And with that, I'll move for approval.
Most of our proof of item, uh, consent item.
Chair.
Well, second. Second. Uh, Ms. Ms. Baron, you recognize?
Uh, yes, sir. Just very quickly, I, I, I just wanted to make a comment that, um, Councilman Pugh and myself. Um, joined the staff on Saturday, uh, for the recycle event. Um, that was a collaborative effort with, uh, Lexington and the City of Columbia and, um. Riverbank Zoo, I'm forgetting one. Um, but, uh, I just want to say that the staff did a excellent job in executing that day. Uh, where it appeared in the short period of time that I was there, um. It's got to be at least a hundred people came through in that period of time. Um, and to be able to have those services provided, um, for Ritson County citizens was a great thing. And just want to commend Mr. Brown and his staff.
That's great. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, it's a move in second for item twelve H. Um, Mrs. Black, can you call the role for the motion for item twelve H?
Malanowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to, um, this is, you recognize?
Newton, yes. Uh, it appears that the, the staff had their hand raised as well, and I wasn't sure if they wanted to comment on the action.
Landfill conference is on the screen. Who's that? Is that someone need to speak?
They're muted.
Okay. Anyway, obviously, um.
Sorry, can you hear me now? I apologize.
Yes.
Say Director Malanowski, I just wanted to, uh, comment on the, uh, statement that you had made. Uh, we do have other events that are planned. Um, and I'll first identify myself. I'm Cindy Castelucchi, I'm the recycling coordinator. Um, we will have other events planned. The, uh, recommendation or the request was only for use of that particular venue. So we do have other, uh, events planned that are not on Richland County property.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And I just wanted to, one, one second, I would like to thank, um, uh. Um, Councilman Pugh and Councilwoman Baron for attending. We had a great time. We did have nine hundred cars that came through that day.
Great. Thank you. That brings us to item twelve, L. Sewer availability, um, Savannahwood Phase Two, Mr. Malanowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just like to point out on the next three, L, M, and N. That the opening line on these under staff's recommended action, it says a sewer availability letter has been issued. Staff recommends county council approve the proposed development. For the record, I want the individuals out there to know the public that council is not approving a proposed development. We are only proposing, uh, a rec, uh, approving that sewer is available. The capacity is available based on the utilities recommendation to us. So that language needs to be noted for every one of these in case somebody comes back and says, well, you approved the development. We did not. And one other item on page one twenty. Uh, one twenty-eight at the bottom of the sewer availability letter. So that there's no doubt about it. The last line says the availability is valid for twelve months. But the number in parentheses is twenty-four. So I want everyone to know that the correct terminology is twelve months, not twenty-four. And with that said, I would move to approve L, M, and N.
You've heard the motion for the approval for, for L, M, and N with, with the, um, uh, recommended changes. Is that second?
Second.
Moving properly second. Any further discussion? If not, um, Mrs. Black, will you call the role for the motion that includes L, M, and N?
Malanowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Teresa? Sorry, yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item twelve O on the consent items.
Sir, Mr. Chair, on twelve O. I would just like to bring to my colleagues' attentions that today we received a redlined version of the actual. Uh, document that is in the agenda. It's different from the one in the agenda. And it's my understanding we're approving the redlined version that we received in the email today. And, and that's all. As long as that's the one we're approving, that came from, uh, Lori Thomas. And that's the one we're approving. I'll move for approval.
Thank you. Any further, if, if, if they're second.
I'll second it.
Second, this, this Mackey, you recognize? And then this Newton, then this Baron.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to confirm the redlined document that was emailed to us will be. Updated or uploaded to the county website for an updated packet for constituents to review. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Uh, ye- yes, good answer, question.
Ms. Mackey, yes, ma'am. I will make sure that that is updated, uh, the red line, uh, as well as the final document if approved.
Thank you. Any, any further question, Ms. Mackey?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Newton, um, and then Ms. Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Thomas, my question was for you. I know you addressed it in your email, but just for the benefit of the public. Um, my understanding from looking at the two was that there were not that many modifications that were made. You were just showing us the red line version, but if you could just quickly address. Um, what if any, um, key differences there are in those documents, I would appreciate it, or whoever the appropriate person is.
Yes, ma'am, I can. Um, specifically, uh, I addressed Mr. Malanowski's, uh, requests and, and concerns. Um, on page four of the actual policy. Uh, we did, we do now require that the training be done for anyone receiving a purchasing card in advance of actually. Um, the card being issued rather than just on an annual basis. So we did add that comment to include there. Um, further, at the bottom, uh, there was one typographical area and error under purchasing guidelines. Um, the word any item purchased that is, it, it's a no, it now says not. Uh, under, under card, purchasing card restrictions on that same page. We've now listed that that is not an all-inclusive list and added a number twenty-five on page six. That set, that indicates that if there are questions regarding the validity of a charge, they should reach out to the PCPA. For any items that could be considered to be in conflict with any county policy. Um, we have updated at the bottom of that page again, um, that we will, uh. I'm sorry, there's not an update there under record keeping, which is on page seven of the actual policy. Uh, and I'm, I apologize, I'm toggling between the two. Um, it does say that we will now require individuals to keep the records for three years for an audit. This does comply with archive, uh, requirements in the state of South Carolina. Um, we have now indicated that any transaction that is found, uh, to be unsubstantiated, unapproved. Or for any purpose that is not related to county business will be required to be reimbursed by the employee. And result in suspension or revocation of the purchasing card for the user. So that is now a will, not a may. The following paragraph, uh, to ensure the integrity of the purchasing card system, periodic audits will be performed. Not may be performed and that cardholders must maintain a copy of all the statements and documents, uh, receipts for three years again. Um. Lastly, we did make a, we did have a redundant, uh, paragraph. That was related to card security that Mr. Malanowski brought out. We have now cut that section and combined it with cardholder responsibilities. And restated all of the information there in its entirety. And those were our changes.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other question? Um, Ms. Baron and then Ms. Teresa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had just a couple of questions that I want to, uh, uh, just to have clear. Uh, in my head as we move forward with, uh, this document and that is. It stated that every, every office or every department will have a go-to person. Um, for a, to, for purchases. Who or will there be a backup person within the office? Um, should this? Um, should this, should a person's out of town or out of the office? Is there, uh, another person that we can, that we can go to?
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes, please, Ms. Thomas.
Uh, Ms. Baron, with regards to that, while it, while it would be, um, it may happen from time to time that that would happen, we would work with departments to make sure that they have the coverage that they're need, and they need. And the department head could always be the person to be able to make those transactions happen.
Okay, but that, so the default, the default person would be the department head, who in return would also be trained as, um, I guess, I don't know what we're calling, the cardholder?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you. And then one, one last question. Um, when it comes to, um, I guess, allocations or funds of that nature, will, for, for an example, will council have one particular card that council's expenses will go on? Or will it still be, um, you know, Gretchen Baron will have a card, even though, um, even though, uh, you know, the keeper of the card has a card, but the main, the, the balance is going to be, uh, able to be, uh, determined from Gretchen Baron versus Shaquise Newton and expenses? And, and I hope I'm, hope I didn't confuse the question.
Now, ma'am, if I understand what you're, what you're, um, what you're hoping to accomplish here is that we have clarity on who's actually incurring the charges. And yes, if that individual within that department is given the appropriate instruction, which we're happy to work to make sure that they understand, they would be able to, to, um, to allocate those charges to individual persons.
But that wa- is, is that going to be the standard? Is that going to be the standard? Because I, I think that it's important that we, that we're able to, um, know where expenses are, are being, where they're going, who's responsible for them. Because if I make an expense based upon, um, the manual or, or the documents you all presented, then I have to set forth, um, receipts that match the expenditures.
Absolutely, absolutely. You would, any, anything that you were to incur would require receipt, that would have to come from you. Yes, ma'am.
So that, that wasn't my question. That, so my question was, my question was that, that the person that had, that is responsible for the cards would have, their records would be, um, would indicate that Gretchen Baron has spent X amount of dollars on these items. So when I bring these expenditures or bring these receipts, then there is a cross-reference to what I'm giving that person versus what is on the record.
Yes, ma'am. We can certainly accommodate that. Now, some departments would have situations that might be a little different because they may be ordering for the department, for office supplies and things of that nature. But if it's attributed to one individual person, yes, ma'am, we can certainly accommodate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a quick clarification of Ms. Baron's question? I apologize, especially since I was used in that comparison. I may have misheard your question, um, Ms. Baron, so I just want to, in case I misheard and others misheard as well, that the way that this is written, we as council members would not have cards at all, but, but rather that in our department, our clerk to council would have cards, and then that those charges that we were reimbursed for would be allocated to us and appropriately. That was what you were saying.
You, you heard correctly.
Okay, there, there is just a, a question, one moment when I heard something different, Ms. Baron, so I'm glad we are singing from the same hymn book. Thank you for the, uh, time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Horatio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so my question is just about, maybe similar to Ms. Baron's. Um, but I'm wondering about who the person for council would be? Would that be the clerk? Would that be someone in administration? Would that be someone in finance? Um, similarly, I have a question about who the, um, purchase card policy administrator is. So this person is listed, but is this also an already existing position that will just take on extra responsibilities?
Mr. Chair, may I recognize?
Yes, please.
Uh, Ms. Horatio, uh, I would imagine this is an appointed position within each department. Uh, with regard to council, uh, it would certainly be your choice who within your office would manage that. But I would imagine that that would be your clerk to council, um, and possibly a backup as well, so that you always have someone that is, that is available, um, to do so, uh, i- if you all would wish.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Horatio, the person that you referenced is already in existence in the procurement department. Uh, that is not a new position, uh, so that, that position would be, continue to be managed by procurement. The, uh, in, the purchase card, uh, administrator you were referencing in the document.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Overture Walker?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, thanks for recognizing me. I don't have a question, but I just received the message from Councilwoman English that she is trying to, uh, get back into the meeting. I think a hotspot died, and so she needs to host a letter in.
He's back in. I'm back in. Thank you, Overture.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you. Any further questions, reference, um? Item four. Mrs. Is that Ms. McBride?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I'm glad to see that, um, the administration has put in some type of internal controls that were missing in the past for a better, um, check and balance and for more efficiency. Um, it does seem like it's going to be somewhat complicated in the beginning with so many new people coming on, and many, many more people having access to, um, purchasing cards, it appears. Um, but I am happy to see that internal controls are being attempted to be put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else coming for us? If not, um, the motion before us is for approval for the consent item twelve O, County Purchased Card Program. If you move improperly second, there's no further discussion. I'll ask Ms. Black to, um, call the roll for the motion.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That, um, brings us to our second reading items, outside of, outside of thirteen. And, and that second reading item is thirteen A.
Mr. Chair?
Miss English.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I apologize for interrupting. I was just wondering if we could reconsider those consent items.
Which items?
Those, you just went over, sir, that, that, that list of items from between, uh, H and R.
Mr. Chair?
So reconsider H through R is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
The motion to that effect, then.
I'm moved to reconsider items eighteen, well, sorry, not eighteen, um, twelve, whatever the number is, uh, twelve H through R.
Second.
Twelve H through R?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Um, yes.
Do items A through G also not want to be reconsidered? Is there any reason we wouldn't reconsider those while we're?
The motion was H through R.
Mr. Chair, clarification, uh, the other items are not third reading items, uh, on most of them, and there's one in here, J, first reading item, so there's no need to reconsider that one.
Understood, Ms. Malinowski. I apologize, sir.
And I think Ms. English is trying to get in touch with you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Ms. X, I know several, Ms. English.
No, it wasn't me. I don't think it was. I was trying to, um, shut down the county computer because it died and start the county phone, so my apologies.
Yeah, um, the, the, the motion was, um, H through R, I think, and Mr. Malinowski's correct. Um, J is the first reading item. We would remove that. So another question about the, the motion to reconsider H through R with exception of I, I'm sorry, with the exception of J.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to approve items H through R with the exception of J.
The motion is H through R with the exception of J.
Right.
In second. In, in the discussion, there's a motion, um, for reconsideration. Um, not, uh, Mrs. Black, can you call the roll for the motion to reconsider, um, items H through R with the exception of J?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q? Q?
This is reconsideration.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
No, we reconsidered, right?
We reconsider, and that's a no from me, Ms. Black, Bill Malinowski.
All right, yes, sir. Livingston, no. Horatio?
Uh, no.
Walker? Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton? No. Motion passes.
That brings us now to second reading items.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Did you recognize, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, just, just a quick one. I want to make sure we're clear. The motion actually technically failed for reconsideration, correct?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Are you?
The motion, right.
Motion failed.
It did not, it was not reconsidered. Thank you. That brings us to, um, item thirteen A, which is a second reading item, authorized execution delivery of a signed by Tyson Fair Foods, Incorporated, um, of, of a two thousand seventeen fee and lieu of abilarin tax agreement by, in between Richland County, South Carolina, and TPF as Project Charlie, the execution delivery of an assigned, assigned net by TFP, uh, to Project Charlie as of nineteen ninety-six, fee and lieu of tax agreement in the form of a lease agreement by, between Richland County, South Carolina. Um, the chair's intent, if we intend a motion for a second reading item thirteen A.
Remove.
It's removed?
Second.
In properly second, in discussion. If not, um, I'll ask, um, Ms. Black to call the roll for item thirteen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us now to the report of the Administration Finance Committee. Mr. The Honorable Bill Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, committee had one item, the Sonaco Recycling Contract Extension. While not unanimous, the committee recommended in favor of approving the contract extension, but due to the time element and time expiring, there were some members that had some questions, and they stated they would ask those when it got to this point, to the, to the council meeting. So while the committee recommendation is in favor, I would ask that you give those individuals the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Item fourteen A. Not a committee recommendation, you said, what's approval?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mrs. Newton, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, I'm not on that committee and would certainly yield to any committee members who wanted to ask questions first.
No way. No way.
I recognize you.
Sure. Well, my, my question wasn't about the agreement as much as that there was a note that the Budget Office had concerns about the solvency, let's say, of the department. And so my question is, uh, what is being done to address those concerns overall? Again, I understand why we need to renew this contract, but I also don't want us to ignore those problems. So if someone could comment on that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Newton. I'm not sure that, uh, Mr. Hayes is on, but I think in general, the question was about the, the landfill, uh, and the associated, uh, program, being able to be a, a true, uh, enterprise program. And I think, uh, prior to, to current times, you may be aware that, uh, there were some rates that really have not ever been addressed over a period of time. Uh, and so those things are what's happening now, uh, but, you know, a- as we are now addressing our rates uh, and trying to get caught up, uh, other agencies, uh, have continued to express their rates. So the services that we are being provided, uh, have continued to increase, even though we haven't got to a level where we are fully recouping the costs associated with all these programs associated with our, uh, solid waste. So I think, uh, that's probably where Mr. Hayes is coming from, uh, with his overall concern. Um, um, but I believe that based on my understanding that, uh, one of the things that solid waste will be bringing to you in the, you know, near future coming up is addressing that. What we need to do to actually, uh, the best way I can say this is to actually capture what it costs the county for these services.
Uh, Mr. Chair, sorry, Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yes. Thank you, Mr. Brown. That, that pretty much sums up exactly, uh, what my concern was, with, for the solid waste enterprise fund as a whole, in that our revenue, um, has not caught up with our expenditures. So that was just my main concern. So yes, you captured it perfectly. Thank you, sir.
Uh, in that event, Mr. Brown, thank, thank you for that answer. I can take the answer to this question offline, but I would love a timeframe, just so that I know when, uh, solid waste will be coming back to us. And, and perhaps either as part of this or as part of our budget workshop process, I would love for us to address our enterprise funds overall, um, to make sure that they're operating as enterprise funds should. So I, I appreciate the concerns being expressed. I just also want to see the, the remedies being expressed as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're quite welcome. Um, I have, Mr. Horatio, I have this English.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in my review of, of the contract, uh, one thing I noted was that, you know, we are at March the second, reviewing a contract that will expire at the end of this month. And my question is just, uh, you know, is administration working towards a, uh, procedure in which we are brought, um, these items with a little more time to spare before they, uh, before, before contracts are up?
Uh, the, the short answer is yes. I can certainly have, uh, solid waste speed to this particular contract. But just by example, we have a, we have a meeting that is scheduled to occur this week. Uh, and actually, we, we put it on the, uh, the calendar, um, going on close to a year, uh, for us to begin to address, uh, projects and, uh, contracts and all types of things that are coming up for consideration. So that's something we have discussed, uh, and I know we're making headway, but we do have a few, uh, items that, uh, still may come up with right now with maybe just a couple of months, uh, for us to address.
Thank you so much.
Council Chair, I can speak to that if you wish.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, we, yes, we, we did get a letter on, uh, September seventeenth, and, uh, at the time, we did have a different general manager. We looked at this initially as a rate increase, and, you know, we may have to bid this service out. Uh, after looking around and talking to other customers, we found there is no alternative to that. And so that's in your briefing document. Basically, to give you the information that's in the briefing document, we needed at least a couple of months with this. We got to, uh, uh, late December, we, we said, "Let's check out and find out if this is really a rate increase." So, uh, we conducted a, uh, composition study of just Richland County's, uh, contribution to the, the facility. Uh, they have to literally clean the facility out and create, create a space for us. So that was programmed with our staff working through the week and weekend, uh, at, at. So that was programmed with our staff working through the week and weekend, uh, at, at Sonoco. And, uh, we found out we have the cleanest recycling due to the efforts that have been put in the collections and making sure we do have all recyclable materials coming there. So what we're seeing in the last page of your briefing document is actually a ten percent, uh, rate decrease compared to what calendar year twenty twenty provided. So we're going to actually see ten percent less when we go into April from what our average for twenty twenty was. So that totally changed, and we even have something in our briefing document early on because the base rate does go up. Um, be- because, uh, the, um, amount of contamination in our recycling is so low, we were actually able to garner a decrease. And it would be two years until we return to, uh, with five percent rate increases, uh, each year to the level we are, uh, for twenty twenty.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's amazing news. And I think that also means that we have less, uh, rejected recycling that would just go into the landfill. Is that true as well?
That is true. Um, and that material will cost fifty dollars a ton to dispose of because now they have to handle it and haul it, uh, to the landfill. So that is, uh, down as well.
Thank you. That's, that's great news. Thank you.
Miss English and Mr. Malinowski.
Um, thank you, Mr. Horatio. What you have just answered my questions. Um, it was just of the, um, amount being brought in, what percentage is taken to the landfill that is considered unclean? And with that, um, reduction in ten percent, that answers my question. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, just about asking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Horatio, I was another one that had that question, but now I'll expand on that a little bit. Director Maloney, if in fact we're seeing a rate decrease, how is that going to affect the initial, uh, question that was asked about the, uh, of Mr. Hayes and that they're concerned of the overall solid waste expenditures remaining, remaining above revenue? Will this help remedy that problem?
Well, it's, it's, uh, maybe three percent of our, our costs related to the overall, um, budget. Uh, but, so I, no, sir, I don't, I don't see that as, as remedying it. I see it going in the right direction. Um, but we're, we're going to have to come back to council to talk about, you know, s- something like, uh, smaller regular rate increases.
Okay, and I also, I spoke with you, Director Maloney, earlier today, and one of my questions was in the bottom of page two twenty-nine for regulatory compliance. It states that we're mandated by South Caroli- by a South Carolina mandate to have a recycling program. And I've noticed other counties do not have a recycling program that at least involves picking up the recycling. They may have other, uh, venues available to take it to. Have you been able to clarify what that mandate is since we spoke?
Yes, sir. Um, our mandate by DHEC is part of our, um, solid waste plan, which is a twenty-year plan. Um, the items I can peel out of the requirements that it must include are designation of a recycling coordinator, description of the recycling program, and outreach and education initiatives, an outline on how the county or region plans to meet the South Carolina's waste reduction and recycling goals. Um, so those, those items are required, that we do have a plan that doesn't require us to have curbside pickup.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, another, actually, you, you can give this to, to me later, but I asked for an explanation of these charts. They weren't that clear to me. But then my last question of you had to deal with potentially a legal response. And that's on page two fifty-five, attachment four, where it says that this is the First Amendment to a commingled recycling services agreement. And the word "contract" is struck through. Now, to me, the word "contract" is stronger than "agreement," and so I'm wondering why we're changing that word.
I, yes, I would defer to legal.
Mr. Malinowski, um, I believe that was just for consistency purposes. So when they, um, in the beginning of the, the first paragraph says the contract amendment, title amendment, and then, um, we labeled something, I didn't actually draft this, so I just commented on it, but, um, they labeled something agreement later. So I, I think I was just doing that for, um, clarity's sake and for consistency. And in general, they're the same terms interchangeable, so you can use either.
Okay, if, if they're interchangeable from a legal standpoint, that's fine, but the one down below in the first paragraph, the second paragraph, where it says per the terms of the commingled recycling services agreement, uh, made and entered into June first, twenty sixteen. It didn't enter into an agreement in twenty sixteen, we entered into a contract. So this would not be correct terminology. It seems to me that you would say, uh, services agreement, formerly a contract that was entered into on June first, twenty sixteen. And the same thing with on the next page, when it's, uh, the last paragraph says, "In witness wherever the parties have executed and delivered this First Amendment to the agreement." Again, we never had an agreement, we had a contract. I don't want to change words like that, make those statements. I'll leave that up to you, please.
I'll, I'll make sure they actually are the right words. Uh, my, uh, I did not have the actual original agreement in front of me when I looked at this, but it was my understanding that it was called an agreement. But if it wasn't, if it was a contract, I will change those words to, to make that right, Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. I have nothing further.
Further, you know the comments. If not, um, is removed and properly second, I'll ask, um, this black, uh, to call the roll.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Uh, yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Yes. Motion pass.
Thank you. That brings us, um, to item fifteen on the agenda, and that is, um, the Economic Development Committee.
Me again, sir. Yeah, I'm just going to ask for reconsideration so we can move on with this item, sir.
Thank you. Chantain, most reconsidered, item fourteen A.
Second.
Reconsider.
They moved and properly second, um, Ms. Black, can you call the roll for reconsideration of item fourteen A?
Malinowski?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Aaron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton? No. Motion fails.
Thank you. Now that brings us to item fifteen A, Report of the Economic Development Committee, the Honorable, uh, McBride.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to report, um, for the Economic Development Committee. We also have, um, one item, and that's committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of Avalon Tax Agreement between Richland County and Project A, identifying the project and other matters related thereto. You can find additional information on pages two fifty-eight and two fifty-nine. And this is simply an inducement resolution that doesn't obligate the county to anything. It only recognizes the project from a legal standpoint so that the company's twenty twenty investments can be included in any incentive that the county negotiates. Um, approval will, um, staff will move to, move forward to finalize negotiations and return to the council with full terms of a proposed agreement. On pages two, excuse me, on pages two fifty-eight and two fifty-nine, you will note that, um, Project A is, um, an entity, entity that cannot be disclosed at this time, so I just wanted to, to note that. But it desires to invest capital in Richland County to expand its aluminum proceedings processing facility in the county. So, um, this is, um, in our last economic development meeting, we talked about different, um, terminology. So again, um, some of the members, my colleagues that attended the meeting, um, it is the inducement resolution that's coming before you now. So, yeah, appreciate your approval.
And what's committee's recommendation?
Or approval?
You heard committee's recommendation, discussion. Not, is, Black, uh, could you call it over, committee's recommendation, item fifteen A?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. That brings us to the report of the President's Vision, that hot committee. Um, the Honorable, um, Overture Walker was elected chair of that committee. But he was called to court at that particular time, and I chaired that meeting, so I'll quickly carry the report. But Mr. Walker will be yours from now on, okay? Um, the, the first item of sixteen A, resurfacing, resurfacing package nine. Uh, the committee, uh, unanimously moved to approve or the, uh, resurfacing package R, to pay by a court of Conway in amount of three million, three hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and nine quarters cents, and to prove a ten percent construction contingency of three hundred thirty-nine, uh, thousand, nine hundred and nineteen cents for the total budget of three million, seven thirty-five, four seven dollars and thirteen cents. Committee's recommendation for approval. There any discussion? Refer to the committee's recommendation. If not, um, I'll ask Ms. Black, um, to call the roll for the motion for item sixteen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
No.
Aaron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Yes. Motion pass.
Thank, uh, thank you. Um, Chantain, most reconsideration, item sixteen A.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Is removed and properly second. Ms. Black can call the roll for reconsideration of item sixteen A.
Malinowski?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. The next item, sixteen B. A resolution to appoint, I'm sorry, excuse me, Gonna's Ferry, um, Harm and Intersection, uh, which is sixteen B. The committee voted three one, um, to move the project forward with the original pre-scope design for Gonna's Ferry, Harmon Road Intersection Project, oh, and that's on page two eighty-seven, uh, in your, uh, package. Committee's recommendations for approval. Is there any discussion? Well, I have one question. Um, Mr. Liamar, uh, uh, you have from pages two six five to ninety-eight. Uh, we're only talking about this one project. Why do we include all those pages with, with the different other projects and so forth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, Michael Liamar, Tractor Transportation. Uh, I thought in the best interest of the new council to see the total of the summary document as well as the, the other projects. Um, in the future, we'll reduce it, uh, that number just to the projects that we're bringing forward. But, uh, again, for this first meeting, we felt it was better just to, to show the total of the document.
But I just want to make sure the record is clear that we're not voting on all of the items between two six five and ninety, and, and ninety-eight. We just voted on Gonna's Ferry and Harmon, uh, um, Intersection. That's what I wanted to make sure of, because it, it's-
Yes, that's correct. Just the Gonna's Ferry, Harmon Intersection.
But it's all, uh, it's clear that, that is all that we're voting on, um, right now, is what I wanted to make the record of. So, if, if, if any further questions? If not, I'll ask, um, Ms. Black to call the roll for item sixteen B, just the Gonna's Ferry, um, Harmon Intersection.
Yes, sir. Malinowski?
No.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
No.
Aaron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Yes. Motion pass.
Thank you. Per staff request, I entertain a motion, uh, for reconsideration.
Move to reconsider.
Move?
Second.
Properly second. Ms. Black, did you call the roll for the motion reconsidered?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
No.
McBride?
Yes. Oh, no.
Livingston?
No.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton? No. Motion fails.
Thank you. I bring us to items seventeen, other items, um, seventeen. I, I, um, that was, let's, let's, item seventeen A, um, approving the Declaration of the Covenant, uh, provision and restrictions for the Blackwood Park and other related matters. You'll find that information, uh, on pages two, two ninety-nine and three two two.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brown, this is Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spoke with Director Rubel earlier today, and because I was not able to get questions answered until tomorrow, he mentioned to me he would be fine with deferring this particular item until the March sixteenth meeting. So based on that, I would make a motion to defer it till March sixteenth.
You heard the motion for a deferral, the item seventeen H, the next meeting, um, is at second.
Thank you.
Moving properly second for a deferral that's not available, I'll ask Ms. Black to please call the roll for the motion, uh, uh, for the for item seventeen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings item seventeen A. That's a resolution to appoint and commission Jordan Casey, Abukambi, um, as a co-inforcement officer for proper security, general welfare, for the proper security of general welfare and convenience of Richland County. Um, Chantain motion.
So moved.
Second.
The move and properly second for item seventeen B, in discussion. It's not, I'll ask Ms. Black to call the roll for the motion regarding seventeen B.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. That brings us to item eighteen, Executive Session.
Mr. Chair, do we want to reconsider that one also? I made a motion to reconsider it.
Most reconsideration, item, um, seventeen B, is at second.
Okay.
Moving properly second for reconsideration, uh, Mrs. Black can call the roll for item seventeen B.
Malinowski?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Mrs. McLean, any of the executive session items, we don't have anything else, correct?
I have nothing else, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to motion period. The motion states that I move that Rich County Council direct the county administrator and his staff to conduct an equity inclusion assessment of Rich County Administrative Policies and Services by recommendation, et cetera. I'll send that to our ENF Committee.
You didn't read the full motion.
Do you want me to read the full motion, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
I will. I move that Rich County Council directs the county administrator and his staff to conduct an equity and inclusion assessment of Rich County Administrative Policies and Services and provide recommendation for comprehensive approach to advancing equity for people of color, women, and others who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent inequality. By advancing equity across Richland County government, we can create opportunities for the improvement of businesses, communities, and individuals that have been historically underserved, which will benefit all of Richland County. Appropriate assessment will be better equipped... Appropriate assessment better equipped Richland County to develop policies and programs that deliver resources that benefits equitably to all. That's on pages three twenty-point, three twenty-five. I'll forward that to our ENF Committee. Before we adjourn, let me quickly at least thank Ms. Black for stepping in and doing a great job for us tonight in place of Ms. On whose heel. Thank you, Ms. Black. We really appreciate it, and you did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Black.
Thank you, Black.
Thank you.
I'll take that motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Yeah.
Second, Mrs. Black, can you call it all for the motion to adjourn?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
I guess so, yes.
He didn't want to leave us.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes, ma'am.
Means adjourn. Make rest of the week.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Go get us some lunch.
Let the bed bugs bite. Don't let the...